Good afternoon. First off, I want to thank both of our candidates for coming in today. We're, this is for Boulder City City Council. Okay, on behalf of Veterans and Politics International, I want to, again, I'm going to extend our thank you for you guys coming in, participating in this process. It's not an easy one. And public service is, it can be a great thing, but it can be a nerve wracking thing as well. And a lot of people don't have the courage to take that challenge on. So just, I just want to thank both of you. I also just want to go over some of the ground rules about the interview process. Both of you are aware. Well, first off, we're going to start originally by having the panel members. We'll introduce ourselves so you guys know who, kind of a little bit about us and who are the people asking you the questions. And then each one of you will be given five minutes, roughly about five minutes, to just kind of describe who you are, why you're seeking our endorsement. And if you could just give a brief background, a little bit about yourself, like, just what do you do for a living, what's your normal occupation, things of that nature. And then each panel member will ask you a question. Sometimes they direct it to one in particular candidate. Sometimes they'll ask you both to respond. We'll give you four minutes to respond. Okay, I'm not going to be rude. If the buzzer goes off, right? And you're in the middle of a statement, I'm not going to cut you off. But if you continue to go much further past that, then I will ask you to wrap up your answer. Or then at that point, I might have to just cut you off. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead. I'll start by introducing myself. My name is Jim Jonas. I'm the Director of Veterans and Politics. I've been an active member of Veterans and Politics since 2008. I have not served in the military myself, however, I do have several family members I have. I am, I like to consider myself a civilian advocate for veterans' rights. With that being said, that's, other than that, that's not, there's really not much more to me than that. Other than I also do co-host with Steve, our podcast that we do weekly. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Len so he can introduce himself.
Thank you, Jim. I'm Len Connell and I'm President and CEO of RLC Veterans Assistance in Las Vegas, Nevada. We are a service-disabled, veteran-owned company. I'm a civilian, but my father was a decorated Korean War veteran. He was injured in combat in Korea while performing air sea rescue duties. Later in life, he lost his hearing. As his son, who knew nothing about the military, I filled out all the VA forms and I got him a 100% permanent in total disability. It took us around a year to do it. So my father and I decided that what we would do with all the money that he got was not to use it for ourselves, but to put it into an operation that we can help other people. Since then, we have helped over 2,000 veterans. We've had granted by the VA over 853 awards. We put $15 million back into the local economy with the value of those awards. We also have 15 service-disabled veterans who were unemployed when I received them. We made them all in a state-recognized VA-accredited advocates. Some are making six incomes and starting other divisions themselves. We also own a nonprofit called, I'm sorry, Veterans Assistance Angels. It's a registered 501(c)(3). It's been an operation for three years. It received over $150,000 of donations last year. That's the arm of our company that helps the indigent, you know, the veterans that are living under free underpasses, whatever else. We've never turned a veteran away for financial reasons. So that's who I am. I'm single. I live in Vegas and that's pretty much it.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Faust. I am a third-generation veteran. All three of us were drafted. I've got some movie experience. I've done TV and other stuff commercials. God damn it. Yeah, I've been around.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we just go ahead and start here on right with Cookie, if you want to introduce yourself?
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for hosting this. And I'm Koki Booth. I'm from Boulder City, 38 years. When we started out, my husband wanted to come to Lake Mead to start his own boat repair business. So we, I gave up my career, he gave up his career. We moved to Lake Mead and we lived on our houseboat for four and a half years out there. While I was out there, we noticed that the lake was turning over and there was ducks and critters dying around the lake. So I immediately got involved in that and working to try to clean up the lake because there was too much ammonia being dumped into the lake and it was killing surface-drinking mammals, which would be a child that would be out of the lake. So that started my career in Nevada, getting involved. Then we moved into Boulder City and my first involvement was, there wasn't a lot for children to do in Boulder City. So I started advocating for children and was able to get a Boys and Girls Club there for the single moms and dads that had no place to take their kids after work and financially just couldn't afford daycare. So these kids were staying by themselves. So I spent many years with the Boys and Girls Club. Actually was nominated their Outstanding Woman of the Year through the Boys and Girls Club. Then I also, being a realtor, and I've been in real estate for 20-some years now. I served on professional standards for the real estate board until I termed out, basically. And then I got, somebody came to me from Governor Gibson's office and asked me to serve on the cosmetology board. And I thought that was a little bit strange, since I was a realtor and I've never been a, you know, a cosmetologist. But they needed a public member. So I spent two terms on the cosmetology board for the state of Nevada. And that was a lot of fun for me. My granddaughter was going to college in Reno, so I got to fly up to Reno every other month. And so I got to spend a little time with my granddaughter that way and visit her while she was in college. And now I've ran for city council. I didn't quite make it last time, so I'm going to give it a good try this time. I love serving my community. I love Boulder City. I have to tell people, when they ask me, "What do you think about Boulder City?", I have to say, "I'm prejudiced." I love it. You have to go do your own research because it's just, it's a small town. I came from a smaller town and I just really feel like, it just, for me, it's a good fit and you can go over the hill. And when you go over the hill, you're in the city. And you can even go to Las Vegas and have a vacation and it feels like a vacation, which my sisters and I have done from time to time, spend four days downtown Las Vegas. And that's a lot of fun. So that's, I'm running because I love my community. I was also a planning commissioner for Boulder City for 13 years. And that's a really good fit for a real estate agent because we deal with bad zoning all the time. If something hasn't been zoned properly or somebody has added on without permits. So I really love doing that. Was able to do a lot of, I felt, good things for Boulder City as a planning commissioner. So now I'm going to try it at city council. Thank you.
Ms. McKay?
McNay.
My apologies.
No, I always was sad though when they used to call me McVay after the Oklahoma sitting by me.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, McNay, Scotswoman. And yes, thank you for having us and nice, wonderful to hear, Koki. And so I'm Valerie McNay and I've resided in fabulous Boulder City since 1994. And I have degrees in speech and language pathology, special education, a PhD in educational policy, ethics, and law. But they wouldn't let me put doctor on my ballot. And it wasn't like with the, what is it, the Jill Biden, they didn't want, because she has a PhD, not a MD, and they were discouraging her from using it. And so I'm not an MD like Dr. Hardy, but I'm a PhD, so you can call me Dr. Val. And so I've been involved in Civic and Political Association Boulder City and throughout Nevada. I've been a president of the Boulder City Branch of American Association of University Women. And we, our goals are diversity, inclusion, and inequality. And we raise money for local scholarships. And currently, I'm serving on the Parks and Recreation Commission because that's what I love to do now that I'm retired after 25 years at Clark County School District and years in four or five other states doing university and educational training and work. And hoping I made a difference in the lives of the kids that I worked with for all those years, sort of took a total of 52 years or something. Because I am a husband-free, child-free, and child-free. But I have a lot of people out there. It's wonderful to hear from them when they say, "Oh, you made a difference in my life." So it was a wonderful career. And so I was on the, I served on the ad hoc pool committee in our community. We're trying to get a new pool. It's 40 years old and needs replaced. And I was eight years on the Boulder City Library Board. And then won numerous awards in my age group, some 71, in triathlons and marathons. And I backpack annually in Grand Canyon and Sierras and do bike tours annually in different states. My favorite one is Nevada. Bike ride across Nevada is awesome. And so I want to get back to the community. And like Koki, I love Boulder City. It's been wonderful. And it was my wonderful friends though that pushed me into doing this. It wasn't really on my agenda, because retiring, I just wanted to do more kayaking, more hiking, more biking, more sports, pickleball is my new thing. And but then the closing of the, to sign up was on, we were having a party over on St. Patrick's Day. Backstop for some family, some wonderful family members. And then they were, because we're not open on Friday, Friday was the official closing of the day. So they, it's like an hour before the city hall closed and they said, "Val, you gotta go. You gotta go. You gotta go because we can have a primary." If you're the, there's only two, two open seats, four candidates for the fifth, then we could have a primary and everyone seemed to want a primary. And so I walked over there because I love Boulder City and love my friends. But I may, we'll see what happens. This is a new experience for me, so thank you.
Len, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And I want to start going towards some veterans' issues and then we can branch on from there. There are 350,000 Nevada veterans. 60,000 received benefits from the VA. Now, the 350,000 is a low number and I'll tell you why that is. Because there's not an army base here, there's not a Coast Guard facility, there's not a Navy base. So they're administered through California. So as far as the demographics are concerned, they live in California, not Nevada. Here's some of the things that are happening to new veterans versus, say, Vietnam War veterans. In the Vietnam War veterans, 45% of them as veterans became managers in their occupation. Vietnam War veterans, 45% of them owned a small business that was successful at some time in their veteran years. Desert Storm and Desert Shield veterans, you know how much that number is today? 4%. Only 4% of Desert Storm and Desert Shield veterans, even after 20 years, are in a job titled as a manager. These are statistics that came from the United States Senate. Only 4% own a successful business. So the weapons have become more dangerous. Burn pits, Agent Orange, all the different things that they experience with female veterans now. Sexual assault, PTSD, all these different things. In politics, we have fewer veterans in elective offices at every level of American government than at any time since before World War II, when we were an isolationist country. So that being said, as city council people in a city that has a lot of veterans in it, the first question would be, you know, are you married to a veteran? Were you a veteran? Do you have children or a father, mother, someone significant other to you? And second of all, as city council people in Boulder City, what can you do or think you can do to help the veterans today? Start with Cookie.
Well, that was a great question and some interesting facts. My dad was in the Navy during the war and my husband's father was also. Vietnam War, I had a lot of friends in that war and a lot of sadness in that war. Bruce Anderson, a kid that I grew up with, came back. I'm sure he had PTSD and he killed himself. So I think there's some residuals that go on that a lot of us aren't aware of. I don't know as a city counselor, council person, what I can do to help the veterans. But as a human and as a voice, I would always support them, always have. I feel kind of sad that we're losing a lot of our veterans. They're going up and they're getting older and they're passing. And I know my dad and Les' dad, they always passed on that feeling of the flag and how proud it was to be American and how wonderful it was to live in a free country. And so I'm disappointed that we're losing that. And I think the younger generation aren't going to get the lessons that I was able to get and my daughter was able to get because we're just losing them. So that's a sadness for me. But wherever I can help, I'll always absolutely listen and do what I can to help. Thank you.
Yeah, like family, my grandfather, my paternal grandfather was in World War I and in the European Front. And he is an amazing man. And he lived to be in his 90s and he became, with like really no education or anything, he ended up being the head of custodial services at a big GM plant in Pontiac, Michigan. And then my dad was in World War II and really, he couldn't, he wanted to get trained as a pilot, but I think his vision wasn't good enough so he couldn't qualify or whatever to be training. And he was at the very end of World War II. And but they, that's how we got in the middle class, basically, was that he got the GI Bill, was able to go to Michigan Tech, become a mechanical engineer. And then he, see, oh then, why not? My mom was doing pretty good. She would work for a decade before they got together, but she had the car and she had, but they got the house, you know? He got a good loan through the GI Bill to be able to get down payment on a home and then raised us six kids. And then my uncle, oh, my beloved uncle, he's still alive. And he got to go on the Honor Flight in the last few years. And we do have, we did have a woman, remember Dawn, was used to do the Honor Flight? So she's now local. I hope they're continuing it. I think someone else is, is making sure that veterans can go on the Honor Flight because he really loved that. It was really good. And he's hanging, I mean, he, I remember the story, what he suffered. He did all those land, sea things and when he was like the radio guy. So he didn't, you know, he just, people died all around him. He was, had, they called it shell shock back then, before PTSD. I guess he was just, he went in at 19 and he's 97 now, I think. And oh, he survived the pandemic. And I just got, I'm going to Michigan next month. I gotta go see him. And but he was, he and he got help and all that. But I know they, everyone warned his future wife that, oh, this might be a problem for his whole life and he's going to suffer with this because he couldn't remember any of his family members when he came back. It was just horrible. But you know, he recovered. He is the most wonderful man. We love him. Everyone who ever meets my uncle, they just adore him. He's just awesome, just awesome. And so that's the family experience that I have at the military. But like I have friends, like Koki had, that mainly were in the Vietnam War and they got, that Agent Orange did horrible things, you know? They're attributing it to ALS conditions and Parkinson's and all kinds. And I think nowadays you hear about the fires and the burnings that were going on and the other sections of war that have injured these people with, you know, horrible injuries, lifelong injuries. So we need to get them help. And we're so lucky in Boulder City to have the Veterans Home. You know, it is a wonderful facility and they stuck it in there. I mean, I have friends who are nurses there and it was, you know, it's been during the whole pandemic. It has been just traumatic. And so, is my time up? Okay, but no, and I'm glad that you invited me. And so I want to help the veterans home to make sure that they get all the assistance that they need. And the Veteran Cemetery there is awesome. You know, I love it. One of my friends will say, "I'm going to go walk with my husband" because she'll go walk over to cemetery. That's why it's fun.
Thank you, Robert.
So Koki and Valerie, I'd like to know which party, which, which branch of the government are Republican, Democrat? Are you running as, and I'd like to know a little bit about your religious background. What do you, what do you do for religion?
Okay, I am a Republican. I really like to refer to myself as an independent in my thinking. I am a Christian. I go to Central Christian Church. But I do have, my grandparents are from Italy. So I am baptized Catholic. I went to Catholic church for a long time. And it just didn't meet my needs for me, but I still love it. And anytime I can go back, when we travel, I'll try to go to Mass and see the different churches. But I think my religion affects me every day. I, it's part of who I am and how I think. I always pray to God that he'll help me with my mouth because everything, now and then something pops out that shouldn't pop out. So I'm always talking to him about helping me with that area of my life. But I think your Christian values kind of help you understand people and care about people and care about the, your surroundings, your earth. Everything is a part of my religion and that they teach me and to be kind to others. I think that's the most important part for me, is to treat others like I'd like to be treated and to do good where I can do good. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, don't let me mess this up. McNay, right?
Got it. Got it. Excellent. So let's see, I'm a registered Democrat and I grew up, that's how my whole family is. It's the one thing, my family's dysfunctional in a lot of ways, but we're all one party, same party. So no fights during, anyway. And then I, and I, but I'm kind of independent too. I mean, well, I do the drinking liberally and I've been doing that for over a decade. We made it Milos that were there. That's kind of to attract people that are nonpartisan. Because if you don't want to join the Democratic Club or the Republican Women Club, you know, people want to know and they're moving here, they want to know. And like we support, let's see, we have families, I was special ed. I had a brother with special ed needs. So some people come to town and they have a special needs child and they're wanting to know that child be accepted. And you know, and sometimes the more independent people are more accepting and understanding and will support them more in the community. Because we couldn't, we finally got a young man, he's not a child anymore, but finally got him hired in a local restaurant. Because usually, you know, at Special Ed in Clark County, they send him to Opportunity Village, where they don't really get paid a salary, they don't get social security, they don't get, you know? And they have to leave and I kept to leave Boulder City to go there. But I've got to push Southwest Diner. They hired this wonderful young man with Down Syndrome. And they all love him. I go in there, talk to him and he has a hard work and he'd worked that in Illinois and that work had credentials. He was good at it and all that. And so that's one of my passions, more than I think any religious, is like helping people with special needs. Whether they're blind, deaf, physically disabled. And that's one thing we've been conscious about recently in Boulder City. We do have the curb cuts, you know, and say, you learn things when you're doing rehabilitation stuff. Is that, but if the curb cuts are there for your wheelchair, for your cane, for your blindness, but if they don't have another, and I don't even know what to call it, a marker in there to have know you were to go on the other side, you're lost. You're traveling, walking in the middle of the street and can't get to the other side.
Thank you.
Okay.
So in school, in school things, do you have a problem with teachers getting too personal with the children? And specifically with their sexual? You know, you can be a girl, if you're a boy, you can be a boy, you can, you can be a boy if you're a girl. Could you just elaborate on that for a second, both of you?
Well, Nevada is at the bottom of the list for education. I think we're number 44, so don't quote me on that, but we're way at the bottom. And I really think that children need to be taught the basics. And absolutely, I think, teaching children the sex education, it's up to the parents to be teaching their children sex education. I think children, when they're little, they don't care what gender they are. I tell a story, my sister thought she was a lion and she would walk around on all four and drink milk out of a bowl. So I think she didn't want to grow up to be a lion and she's changed her lifestyle. But I think we should let children be children, let them play and enjoy life. I was lucky, I got to grow up that way. And we, math, science, English, that was the most important thing when you went to school. And I think they've just got away from teaching the basics and we should get back to the basics. And the sexual education should be left up to parents.
Well, as a veteran of the schools for decades, and just to clarify about the Clark County School District, they're number 50th, but that's on funding, not for quality of education or testing or anything like that. It's the, they don't get money, enough money compared to any of the other states. And this has been such a trying time during the pandemic for students and for faculty. And I think that because we don't want sexual harassment in the military, we don't want sexual harassment in schools, we got to prevent that kind of thing. We have to explain to people what's, our kids, what's appropriate and what's not appropriate. But also make sure that they are caring about each other and that they're, you know? I mean, I have, I worked with a lot of preschoolers. So those kids, a lot of them, they, they were so, they need a hug, you know? They just need to feel loved and they need to feel that they're appreciated and that they have talents and all that. And just more you can do to praise them and reward them and get them involved in sports and theater and other things to have a rich life that, because their home life may not be that good. I was just looking at the statistics in the paper the other day about how many child abuse and neglect cases there are in this county. It's just unbelievable. So you know, we got to, to me, the teachers are substitute parents. They kind of have to be there for the kids if they're having a hard time at home and being troubled and stuff like that. But you know, I love education. I love teachers. I love students. And I just think that we always can put more money into it and more effort and more work and all that and reduce class sizes and do other things, but they all cost money, so.
Okay, thank you. So I want to shift gears here for a minute. I'm going to get into something that is very passionate for me personally and my business partner. Him and I went through a lot of difficulties with some of the improvements that we've made on this facility. And one of the main reasons why we went through the issues that we did, and I brought this up to the Las Vegas City Council, and as of yet, I have not heard back from them. And I call them quite frequently. So my question is, when it comes to pulling permits, it's very frustrating that, for instance, I don't understand why there's a different permit process for the county, a different permit process for the city of Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, Henderson, and Boulder City. Now, while I fully respect the fact that they're all different municipalities, it gets very confusing to people that own property and very time-consuming and very costly. So I want to know if elected, if you would be willing as a Boulder City City Councilwoman to reach out to your peers in other municipalities and try to streamline this process? So if I'm building in Boulder City, I'm not, I'm not concerned that, hey, in Las Vegas, this fence only needs to go six inches down, but Boulder City, it needs to go 10 inches down. It's very time-consuming. So is there any way that you could help with your influence once elected to get this process streamlined? Cookie, if you would like to go first?
Well, being a planning commissioner, I understand what you're talking about or have been a planning commissioner. Part of the problem is each town is an entity and a revenue source. So nobody wants to relinquish their revenue source. In Boulder City, part of the problem is we're a small community, so it's hard for us to get our codes and the permitting process streamlined. Like if you went to Henderson, it probably would be a little more streamlined. I don't know why it is and I think it's very frustrating because part of my life was being a pool contractor in California with my dad, our family business. It's always been difficult working with planning. And I agree with you, it would be nice if there was one standard set of how you do a patio. But each community has their own issues and their own uniqueness. Some cities have smaller lot sizes, some larger lot sizes, different things that you can do. So I think that's where it comes in, is that each, each city is its own little So I think that's where it comes in is that each, each city is, it's a little city and they want to develop their own zoning and codes and nobody's willing to relinquish that part of it. So I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, I would love to, I'm happy to reach out to anybody, but I think that's kind of fighting an uphill battle, unfortunately.
Ms. McNay?
Well, Cookie knows a lot more about this topic than I do. Schools, yes, but I'm hoping that I hear a lot of complaints from citizens and that's what I'm going to do for the citizens, give back to Boulder City. And they do complain about the permitting process frequently, that it's just so complicated and effortful to do it. And so I would certainly like to work on their issues and find out what's going on and why can't, why are we making it so hard for residents? Now, I understand, you know, we have all the historic areas that are designated and they have certain rules and they have to follow because they are in the designated historic and we, well, a lot of us love Boulder City because of the historic nature of it. So we want to maintain that, but it shouldn't make it so difficult for people who just want to make some, you know, minor improvements. And some seem to go through, breeze through the process. It almost seems like it's discriminatory almost, like some people can get through, maybe they know somebody or whatever, they can get it done. Others have to just, it's endless. They can never get the permits that they need to do what they want to do on, on their property. And I think that the planning commission, I don't know that doesn't, does the city council appoint them? So we would have a say to be able to interview and hopefully make sure that they're going to work on that aspect. And but yeah, that, that's something I need to learn from the city employees and stuff about what's going on and what, how can we make this better for our citizens?
Okay, thank you. I just got a quick follow up on that, just for both of you. It'll be brief. I respect both of your answers because it is, it is a very tough issue and I understand there's, I wish there was a magic wand, there's probably not. But would either one of you be willing to hold, because Boulder City is such a close knit community, would you guys be willing to hold like maybe a town hall and hear from the citizens of Boulder City on what some of their concerns are? Because this may not be such an issue in Boulder City, but it is throughout the valley. And what ends up happening is, is when the permit process is too tough, then people go, they, they try to go outside the permit process and that becomes a safety issue. Because if you're not hiring licensed contractors, you know, if you don't hire a licensed contractor to wire this light correctly, that could be a fire hazard. So it's a safety issue as well. So would either one of you guys be willing to hold like town hall meetings and bring people in to at least know more about it? I'll go to you. I know it's a loaded question, but sorry.
It is a loaded question.
I got a big mouth.
I can tell you, I wanted to say something. A lot of times why it takes longer in the permitting process, this is an older building that you have and a lot of times older buildings don't have some of the same setbacks and maybe somebody's added something on they shouldn't have. So yes, it's the permitting process is always harder on an older building. And in Boulder City, we have what we call a lot of substandard lots. So you might have to go before this, you know, the planning commission to actually ask for a variance to build what you want to build because you don't meet those parameters. So older buildings are always a little tougher. I, one of the things I do, everybody knows my phone number. You're welcome to call me anytime. I'll give you my phone number and you can call me even, but I have no problem. And it's something I do want to look into because I know I have solar on my house and the solar permit was really easy to do, but now it's taking several months to get a solar permit. That's, you do the basic thing every time on a solar permit, it shouldn't have to go before any study or any planning or anything like that. Why? And that, I too want to go talk to city staff and find out, why is this happening? Why can't we get some of the easy things done right away so people can get their solar put on their home? Because it's important to take care of our earth.
So for clarification, James, is it like you want to have more than citywide? Do you want more like countywide meetings or what was?
Well, in particular, like that would be outside, something that'd be feasible for you to do, I think, to go outside of Boulder City. But one thing that we've done with this organization is we started very small and we've gotten a lot bigger. So being that I am a huge fan of Boulder City and you guys have a great city there. And I'm just, I really would like for you to hold some town hall meetings in Boulder City and I won't commit with my business partner, but myself, so we can get that conversation started. Because that, that's when you start gaining a movement and then people start listening to you. So yes, Boulder City in particular.
Yeah, because I was going to say, I will definitely always be listening to the citizens. I mean, they're the ones, if I do get elected, it's because they elected me and I need to do what they need to see done in the city. So and I think, I think really most of our city council meetings are just open to everyone. And if you just get it on the agenda as an item, I'm sure that and get the word out. We have a pretty good communication background, a good website and stuff, so people can find out about something like that happening in the community and a local newspaper weekly that can hopefully get all the word out so people could participate and give, share their concerns and problems and for the whole council.
Just a quick point of clarification before my question. The Boulder City City Council, are you in districts that are linked to geographical areas? So basically, everybody is the whole city, okay? And there are five positions open. How many people are?
Two positions.
Two positions, okay.
Five candidates.
Five candidates, okay. So you're right.
One mayor, two city council members.
Okay, so you guys are running against each other, okay? There's, just want to figure that out, okay?
There's five, and we have these five council members all together. So you always want to get something done, you'd like to have three that can kind of work together to get three to two.
Exactly. Get the others, get the others out of their houseboat, bring them in, vote, take them out of the seat, put them back out, okay? So anyway, here's the thing, Boulder City has a strong economy right now, largely because of educated college graduates, elder people that were upper middle class citizens to begin with. The average bank balance in Boulder City is $58,000. The average bank balance in Las Vegas is 7,900. So the people there probably don't even need a government, they could probably just take care of it themselves and a lot of times they've done that in history. This is where it becomes precarious. A lot of the COVID funding is going to go away and that buttressed up the Boulder City economy for a couple of years. Second of all, you have a brain drain that all those wonderful Boulder City, upper middle class children that go to the Boulder City schools, they don't go to UNLV, did I say UNLV, okay? They go to Harvard, Yale, Princeton, University of California, they go to name schools. But sadly, when they go there and they stay there for four years, they marry someone in that state and all the training that we've done for them benefits another state. So we don't even have people coming back to build the economy. On top of that, you have a environmentalist movement and government control over a lot of your available land that you can develop. So and then also with an aging population, Boulder City could very easily become one big nursing home with nobody to revitalize the economy. So that being said, the trade off between the people that want to keep Boulder City small, want to keep the quote unquote riffraff out, the fight just to put a bus line in there that I remember years ago was terrible because they knew that it would bring in lower income people and crime, whatever else associated with it. The fight to keep the casinos out of Boulder City when they were waving big fat checks to revitalize the downtown area because they would change that. But knowing that if you do nothing, there might not be anybody left to do any economic activity in the city of Boulder City. However, if you increase your landmass too quickly and you grow too quickly and you bring too many industries in, it's not Boulder City anymore, it might be North Las Vegas. So as council people, what would be your economic plan to balance the quality of life, environmental, recreation, clean, green Boulder City, but have a large enough tax base to pay the bills and is ultimately going to be? And also too, to make sure that all those children that go to Boulder City High School don't build the economy in New York, Boston, Philadelphia and the Ivy League schools that they went to, how do you get them back? So I'll start with Valerie and then I'll have Cookie. And Cookie will sell more houses if there's more real estate, you know? So go ahead.
Well, you know, your demographics aren't really quite up to date here. You need to do a little bit more research on that. Because I give scholarships to local women and I also belong to Women in Support of Women. We have entrepreneurs, young women, we just opened, have you seen the Iron Rose, I guess beautiful, 29 year old woman came in, just wonderful business and she's worked putting plants up in the new Cornish pasty place. We have businesses, even during, we have new businesses coming in and opening all the time and they're by young people, we're young, educated people. And when, what's it, the library, you know, you have to find books for the population that you have. And, you know, it wasn't like we had to get all these cookbooks for seniors that were cooking. No, no, we had to get a lot of electronic stuff and computer stuff and do all these things. And I think the scholarships that I give out, I've been giving them out for 28 years, they come back. They may go to Ivy League schools and stuff like that, but they come back because they love Boulder City, they have family there, they love the lake, they love the outdoor recreational opportunities. So, you know, and everyone always thinks that we're just old and I don't think that the numbers don't reflect that in the, in the current demographics and stuff. So but we'll always fight to try and keep our young people there and keep things in urgent and our businesses have done so well. And, you know, we have those solar plants, you know, I always say, we're dam resilient because if it wasn't, there's sun everywhere, right? But if it wasn't for the dam and all of those structures that carry them, the energy to California and all that, those companies wouldn't come here. They don't have to put all that infrastructure in to get it there because it's already there. So we're making 40% of our budget, I think that the mayor said earlier, that comes from those, those solar and that's still protected land, that's a solar energy zone and it has desert tortoise habitats being protected. We just have to worry about our lake this period.
Well, I think you're, you don't understand Boulder City. We're not all snobs over there and we have a blend of people. We have some people, like you said, we have 55% of our population is over 50 and absolutely we have some very well educated people that have moved and retired and have come to Boulder City, but yet we have a family base also. I think it's important to know that not all the kids go to Ivy League schools, a lot of them go to UNLV. My nieces are once going to be, well, she is, a speech therapist in Clark County School District. My other niece is working on getting her psychology degree to work in Clark County School District. So not all kids go that direction and a lot of them do go to UNLV and some of the different technology schools. There's a pharmacy school here in Nevada that I have another one of my friend's son is going to that. So we have, not everybody goes that route. But what happens, because there is a growth moratorium in Boulder City and the residents have not wanted to change that, they want to keep it where it is. So in order to build in Boulder City, anything over acre of land, you have to go to the citizens for a vote. They just haven't voted any land for sale for homes, except for track 350, which they're trying to get that taken care of now so that they can take that money and build a swimming pool with that. So they're just, they really just don't want to have more homes. They want to keep it small and just kind of keep the history there. Solar, I fought, they wanted to put a landfill out there, so I fought very hard and very strongly to get the solar out there because I thought that was a better fit for Boulder City because Class Four would have taken hazardous material and that would have destroyed Boulder City. So with the solar, and we do have all the runs out there for the electrical and the gas line to be able to transmit solar and we have enough land that we could add more solar should we need to expand. But I think that's something that we all need to talk about is the future and how do we go forward in the future? So I agree with you, that's a good topic and a good conversation to have, but we're really nice people. We have a lot of wonderful families over there. A lot of them have to go and live in Las Vegas and Henderson and then as they move up and they sell their house and come back to Boulder City. I see a lot of people coming back to Boulder City that were born there, raised there and they, they do want to come back to that lifestyle. So I just feel that if you came to Boulder City, you'd know we're all wonderful over there and you would, and we'd open with welcome, we'd open our arms and welcome you. I do feel though that with, we don't have enough children sometimes for our schools to keep them really getting some of the different programs that are available to other children. So I think it would be important to have that conversation of how do we move forward with our schools and getting programs for our kids in Boulder City?
Yeah, we have, we have time for one more question from the panel and then we're going to have to end this interview. So go ahead, Lynn or Robert, whichever one.
Just on a, just on attack, they did notice that middle school age children, there's a big deficit in Boulder City right now. And as a, maybe as a professor and a statistician and whatever else, that could bode something on that. But going over to the question that this, this nice gentleman had posed, you know, and that is that we have a transgendered population, we have a homosexual, we have lesbians. My personal assistant is a transgender woman and now she runs a division of my company and she was in the service and I took her from being homeless to a job that now makes over six figures and I did that in three years. The schools right now and the government is getting into through the teachers defining sexuality with the children. And it comes up to a situation where now we have boys that want to compete in girls' sports, they turn into women. I'm going to say that I'm going to oversimplify that. A lot of people that might come out as lesbians, come out as gays. The question I have to say is that, do you believe that homosexuality, that children are born homosexuality or transgender? Or does society, if enough authority and respected authority groups like government and teachers say, yes, it's okay to do this, yes, it's okay to go in a girl's bathroom, can society actually influence someone or acculturate someone to become gay? And I'll let both of you talk about that.
Go ahead. You know, I'm not a psychiatrist and I think that's a question for a psychiatrist, to be honest with you, because I don't know the answer to that question. So I, I have to kind of opt out of that question, to be honest with you.
Oh, I want to take it back. I have too many children and parents who are dealing with, and it's very, you know, emotional to go through these transitions because they're, they're still looked frowned upon in society, culture and society at large. So people aren't supportive as they want, as you, I would want them to be. And I think that, and that's why one of the things that with, you know, we don't even have an equal rights amendment in this country. We don't have a lot of equality things. And I know that it's a struggle. I'm thinking of my girlfriend's son, who's a senior in high school here in Clark County and he's been struggling with, you know, that feeling incorrect in his body. So he, you know, he's a mind, but you need to have, you know, and what are some of these states doing there? They're not letting them say the word gay, they're not letting them go to a doctor to get the treatments that they might need to help them transition. And if they do, the parents are going to be charged with child abuse. I mean, that's, that's just not right. I mean, I think when you see someone going through, I don't think it's, I think that they feel like they were really born a different gender, you know? And we should get Caitlyn Jenner to come here and talk to answer this question. The athlete that, what do you want, the decathlon back when and now he's Caitlyn? And so, I mean, I don't think you're born, I think it's just something that you end up feeling that I'm in the wrong body or did that. And then I don't know, I have a lot of friends who are, are gay and lesbians who have wonderful relationships, they have families, they, they've adopted children, they do that and they seem perfectly, you know, fine. And I think that that's your choice, it's your, your right to do, be whoever you feel like you need to be. So I would always support LGBTQ and trans, trans rights.
Okay, well, I want to thank you both very much for coming in. I know it's, it's tough because you do not know what questions are going to be asked, right? So, yeah, right. Yeah, no, that's one thing that Steve and I are adamant about. We will not give any candidate questions beforehand. So with that being said, I want to thank you both, you two ladies, very much for coming in. So that will conclude our endorsement interview for Boulder City City Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
And go there, go.